Good evening. This is City of Platteville, City Council, working today's date on May 16th, 2022, the time at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper performance with open up the meeting act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Swan.
Here.
Davenport.
President.
Bemilar.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Pomona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
All in attendance.
They'll take the motion group, move our previous limits.
Necessary motion.
Right here. For you.
Aye. Okay, first one agenda is Resolution 92, grant the approval to the American Cancer Society for fundraising bike event through the city on June the 4th.
Any questions?
Sister.
I'm sorry. Do we know their route?
We do know the route. I don't have it in front of me, but they have to give us their route for approval. I can get that. We have authority to you guys, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Standing up, yes.
Resolution 93 authorizes the execution of the recreation and open space inventory.
Any questions?
Yes.
Can I have that explanation, please?
Yes, so the city has several areas throughout the city that is deemed as green acres property, which is our open space property or recreation. And at this time, we have to update what they call the RSE, which is the open space, the recreation, open space inventory. So we have to update it because as you know, we worked on the diversion at the William Avenue properties, which is diverted some property to open space. So we have to update that RSE, and that's what this resolution does.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 94 amended the 2022 budget.
Any questions?
Yes. That's the next one.
Yeah, there's a minor, as you all know, you approved our budget to go before the state for review. It came back with one minor recommendation, and I'll let our C E O explain.
Same big like a good director under Pat Moore.
No, I don't even see him.
No problem. P D, Scott Mire, from Booming Company, we're the city's auditors. As part of the budget process, the Division of Local Services, those review the city's budget every year, and we have to wait for their approval before we can go through the public hearing and adoption. So as part of this year's review process, they did have one minor item that they requested that be corrected. We had an appropriation of the budget for municipal alliance for 15,000, but those are not to be offset by revenue, to the same revenue for that grant. We didn't have a firm, really, estimate of what that revenue would be for this year. So the state requested that appropriation and/or the expenditure be changed from municipal alliance down to matching funds for grants. So it doesn't affect the total budget. If you had changed the total budget, you'd probably have to have a public hearing on that amendment. In this case, it's more just the line item correction, where there's no further, other than approving, it's not going to be further processed.
Thank you, Mr.
Any more questions? Standing up, thanks.
Resolution 95 authorizing the municipal budget to be read by title only at the public hearing.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
The public hearing for the budget will be held during a regular session. Next, we have Resolution 96 adopting the 2022 municipal budget and authorizing the amount of $32,451,625.50 for municipal purposes for the city.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 97 requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the physical year 2019 urban and municipal aid grant program for the Decatur Avenue improvements.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 98 requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the physical year 2012 municipal public urban aid, physical year 2018 urban and municipal aid grant program for the Anthony Boulevard improvements.
Anything to say in response to these resolutions?
Yeah, this is probably our second extension for both of these resolutions, 97 and 98, for our municipal aid grant programming that we do not want to forfeit and send back to NJDOT. So based on our monthly needs that we've been having with them, make sure that we stay on top of all of our grants. It was recommended by the state that we do another extension while we get all of our infrastructure funding in place, so that we can not only just do the streets that, we can do the infrastructure as well.
Thank you. Any more questions? Next.
Resolution 99 grant the approval of a community event in the city on June the 4th at the Tilton Avenue Ballpark.
Any questions?
Just an explanation, if I may, the council chair. This item did not go before committee. I was on vacation last week when it discovered to go before committee, so I'm bringing it before council for full council consideration, for an event to be held at the Tilton Avenue Park. I just want to say that we contend upon the council person who's having the event to know that there should be no political activity done during this community event.
I'm not sure if you understood that.
Probably.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 100 granting the approval of a multicultural wellness event in the city on June the 10th at the City Hall parking lot.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 101 supporting the suitability of cannabis business Brighter Side Canopy LLC and our project coordinator, Ricky Nettie, to come forward.
Brighter Side.
Brighter Side.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Today, before you, the resolution supporting the cannabis cultivation for Brighter Side, they said no. You approved their application back in December. They found a new address where they're going to operate. They're making that address, it's on Lee's Avenue, it's in the resolution, and they're making that their new home in the city of Pleasantville. They have received their conditional license. One of the things to get the conditional license through the final license is the site location. Today, I want to introduce the principal of Brighter Side, Lindsay Schulte, so she can talk about, you know, her coming to Pleasantville and what her goals are in the future. Lindsay?
Yeah. Hello, council mayor. First, I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support, council and mayor. It's been challenging to find a good location that I think is acceptable for our business and for the community. And so we're very excited to operate our micro business within the guidelines of the city of Pleasantville. We're excited to offer jobs within the community and really start from the ground up and build a strong, substantial community business that we can develop into greater things as the future continues, with potentially expanding, but really, most importantly, just creating a solid business that offers good jobs, great tax revenue for the community. And again, we're just committed to be here in Pleasantville. I hope we've demonstrated that since we've been communicating with you all since December, really. Any questions, potentially?
The building, which building was that again?
It's 532 West Eads, and it's two doors down in front of the UPS Center. It was the old garage. What we love about the property is it fits perfectly for our micro business, which, as you guys know, is operating 2,500 square feet or less. It has a fantastic lot in the back that's all fenced in with barbed wire, so secure. We're looking forward to making good improvements to the property, and I think it's in a great location that's isolated from the community and really has a low impact.
Cool. Any questions?
I appreciate it. I look forward to working with the community.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did they go through the process of getting their license through the city? Would you not join the whole way to here?
No, not at all. That's an excellent question that was raised by another council person when they called in today, and we know that that is part of our process. With Brighter Side and Savage being the first two entities that the city has dealt with, we've kind of made that step two rather than step one. But the entity has been informed that that is part of the process, and right now, their license at the state, I do believe, is conditional or contingent upon for the actions that's required by the city. They will be making that.
Okay. And just for your reference, too, once potentially we get approval for the resolution, we're then able to submit our second part of the application, which is demonstrating site control resolution and approval with the town. And there's a whole slew of other requirements that the state require, in which we hope to be applying within the next 20 days. And hopefully, if the state moves quickly, which we all know they don't, we'll hear something back within 60 to 90 days. So, thank you.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
You have other locations other than Pleasantville?
We have a location in the state of Michigan. We also have a location that we operate in York, Pennsylvania. Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 102 authorizing amendment to the fifth renewal to the interlocal services agreement with the County of Atlantic for the divisions of security services at the Pleasantville branch lot there.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Resolution 103, an add-on granting approval of a community food distribution event in the city of Pleasantville.
Any questions? Standing up, next.
Next is the view of the bids.
Unfortunately, I can't, because Scott's one particular. If you look at the bill that was distributed, we have check register by check date. Nearly all the checks that are any important are wire transfers. We did two minutes council meeting. This council meeting, the first one you'll see is $450,000. As you know, in our budget, we have the store utility supplementing some cash, and at the first draw, $450,000 on the million two is in the budget. Second number, $85,000, that is the store employee portion of pension payment that we have to pay. And then you'll see the next one is $3,713,000. That was the pension payment that we submitted up to the state for both police and fire, as well as the rest of the P E R S employees. Out of that cost, 3.2 million is police and fire, and the balance is the other employees. Payroll, 643 for payroll makes six. We have a debt service payment of $42,000 for interest from bond from 2015, and then the $1 million, that was our draw today for the county taxes for the second quarter. If you look at the bills to be paid, the first page, third one down, page 48. For those who have been down at the bus station, you see that they're doing something. It's murals and that type of thing down at the bus station, the flooring, the walling. This is the final payment for the work that they've done. This is coming out of N P P grant. If you go to page two, near the bottom, you'll see Douglas Gray. We did H V A C cleaning for the fire department for all their ducts. There's a painting regarding the purity of the air. We compensated for them by having their ducts completely cleaned out.
I'm sorry, what was that?
This is fourth from the bottom, page two, Douglas Gray, for 3,600 hours.
Thank you.
Go to page three, halfway down, a quarter way down, fire and safety purposes. That was for maintenance on the tower ladder trucks. And then two from the bottom, you'll see track uniforms. We pay for some of the kids who run in the track and field. We provide uniforms. Page four.
Say that again?
Sorry.
We paid for some, but not all?
No, we paid for what was in the track and field.
Oh, okay.
Page four, Dr. Mechanical. This was repairs that were done to the filter building and to a lot of the work that was done with irrigation system. There was work beyond it that was done also. Apparently, the irrigation system was in kind of a bad condition, and so that there was probably another 400 or 500 hours worth of bills coming in that were added beyond the original work.
Mayor, if I can just, councilwoman Thomas, you were at that meeting when we did that walkthrough. This is the outside work, outside of the Joker House, that we, the city, said that we would maintain, and as you can see, the work is being done.
Thank you.
That is number two, number four.
Dr. Mechanical. I think there was also work done in the sink area, I guess in the concession area. We're in the process of getting other things done, too. We talked to people who are putting cameras on the building, and we're also looking at a scoreboard. We've got a couple quotes. Now we need someone to be able to install it. So that's, we're still working to try and upgrade the Joker Field the best we can.
Did you send me those quotes?
Absolutely. We have three that range from 20 to 12. And then we looked down at about two-thirds of the way down, Broad East, render number 39790. That bill that I've been holding, waiting for passing through the budget, that for H V A C work that they've done in multiple locations, firehouse, police station, recreation building, as well as public works.
Excuse me. Does that include the compressor that was supposedly being replaced? I know you were complaining about downstairs, that there was no air down there?
That's been done.
Okay.
We're looking at that force they gave us with 17,000 dollars.
So now, sit in the basement area of the fire department is still off limits?
Off limits.
There's no urgent need for them to use that area. They sweep upstairs, they were using that area for workout and meetings, but they have other areas to do that in between get to that. But as you can see, based on the bill's items, we have been taking care of the other maintenance issues.
Can I ask a question? It's all related to this. We have the first female firefighter now in a while. Were there any?
Yes.
I can't, you know, charges?
Accommodations?
So, yeah, there was accommodations, specifically as regards to sleeping arrangements, bathroom usage and things of that nature, proper attire, and, you know.
I think it's money well spent.
Yeah, and training, sensitivity training and things of that nature. It's not new for other departments, so we've really mimicked what the P D had in place because they have females there, and we did a whole training in the fire department, and so far, it's so good.
Other departments, other municipal.
Okay, thank you.
The one bill listed right below that, the school tax of $798,000. Three from the bottom, it was $11,900, that's for fuel used by the school, that we pay rigands. As I mentioned before, they're part of our plan with rigands. You know, most, 99% of ours is with the county. We will pay rigands once we get paid from the school. So they run a bill, they pay us, we pay rigands. And then the next one, Atlantic Fault, that was a bill left over from our snowstorm in December. They just finally got around to sending the bill. And then we'll go third from the bottom, U.S. Securities, passed a resolution today regarding the security of the library. This is who has the security contract, and we get reimbursed from that, I believe, up to $55,000 for the year for that service. We get that reimbursement account.
And this bill is monthly, here?
That is probably three weeks. Any other questions? Any questions?
Yes. Page four, it says COVID test. Is that for one employee? Was that for the past, like, I mean, cross guards that we hired? Page four for $330,472.
It's $330. What's the cost?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's for two cross guard. It's, I'm sorry, three, I'm sorry, the three.
Three?
That we interviewed, whether we hired or not depends on a lot of things. But when we bring in, when they get hired or when they get interviewed, we have to have COVID tests to make sure that they're on the building. And this is the cost that we bear.
Okay, I'll talk to that.
As Mr. Page said, I think, last council meeting, we have our turn.
Any information that you previously gave me from the company?
I'll talk to you.
Yeah. They have followed through with us, so.
And then, page one, $5,395. It says special labor matter. Is it just one matter or numerous matters?
For bigger, this is a multiple case, would you please refer?
Thank you. And next is public portion, July 18th.
Next is public portion. From the public, suspect, I took that item, just up forward. Standing up, motion for the public portion. Motion second, all favor. Now it's open for discussion.
Nothing at this time?
Not at all.
No, nothing at this time.
Motion closing work session.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Seven. It's the city of Pleasantville, city council, regular meeting, today's date is May 16th, 2022, the time is 6:53 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper performance with open public meeting act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for Sunshine State Department of Public, please stand for application of flag. Roll call.
Swan.
Here.
Davenport.
President.
Bemilar.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Pomona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sisdrum.
Present.
All in attendance.
Motion is expensive to read in the minutes.
Second.
Mayor, we'll come to you.
Thank you.
Right, clerk?
Okay, first, the resolution 92, grant the approval to the American Cancer Society for fundraising bike ride event through the city on June the 12th.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 93, authorizing the execution of the recreation of open space inventory.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 94, amended the 2022 budget.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 95, authorizing the municipal budget to be read by title only at the public hearing. Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next is the public hearings for the 2022 municipal budget. At this time, the hearing is open for the municipal budget. If anyone has any questions or comments, please come forward. You state your name.
Standing up, motion closing. Motion second.
Resolution 96, adopted in 2022 municipal budget and authorizing the amount of $32,451,625.50 for municipal purposes for the city. Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 97, requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the physical year 2019 urban and municipal aid grant program for the Decatur Avenue improvements.
Motion second.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 98, requesting a six-month extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the physical year 2012 urban aid, physical year 2018 urban and municipal aid grant program for the Anthony Boulevard improvements.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 99, grant the approval of a community event in the city on June the 4th at the Tilton Avenue Ballpark.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Stay.
So noted. Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 100, grant the approval of a multicultural wellness event in the city on June the 10th at the City Hall parking lot. Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 101, supporting the suitability of cannabis business Brighter Side Canopy LLC.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 102, authorizing an amendment to the fifth renewal to the interlocal services agreement with the County of Atlantic for the division of security services at the Pleasantville branch lot there. Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 103, an add-on granting the approval of a community food distribution event in the city.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bids.
Motion second.
Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. I need a motion to approve bingo and raffle license.
Motion.
Second. Roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Bemilar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Pomona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisdrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next, the public portion.
Next, the public portion. You know, from the public, which is to seek on any item, who's come forward, if they've made it come forward.
Hi. Good evening. I wanted to know, are we not going to, are we not going to discuss, um, this deal tonight?
It's not on our agenda.
That's not my question?
You're free to speak about it.
You're free to speak about it.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. So, if that's the case, being the case, um, last time we had a meeting, we asked to, to know who the Pleasantville Environmental Partners are. Um, as far as I know, nobody has gotten back to anybody with those names. Have you, do you not, still not know?
We, if I may, the chair, um, so that we wanted to make sure that we gave you the correct information. We reached out to the party who, uh, created the LLC, who initiated the application, and today we don't have that response.
And so, we're still going to, like, just give them our money?
That's not a question for me, but we don't have the, that was the information.
So, you, you still planning, are, are you planning on doing this deal or not doing this deal? What are you doing? Because the last time we were here, um, there were four noes up there. Are these, are there still four solid noes to this concession?
Seven solid yeses to this deal.
No, it wasn't not at the last meeting. No, it was not, and it's all filmed.
Seven solid yeses to it.
It was not seven solid yeses.
At the last council meeting, I stated my opinion was no when I was asked, as every council member was.
Individually, they all asked.
Can you ask me, ask me?
Attorney, we have the attorney here.
We have the attorney. Display where I'm doing this. It's at the state level, like, before we go.
Just elaborate on some little bit. Where it stands right now is that council did adopt an ordinance authorizing the B, well, called the agreement. Uh, however, that's not final agreement because part of the ordinance that adopted it requires that it be presented to the local finance board, which happened, I think, April nineteenth or something. And based on what the local finance board comes back with, that may not affect the views of any of the council members of what they're forward. But it, it's not a final, final deal until that information is received, until council acts. Again, they may not take any action, but they may take action based on what local finance board tells them.
I understand. It wasn't on the main agenda, so it was top of the, but, um, also what I want to know is, how do you feel about your constituents, like, the people that pay these taxes, the people that live in Pleasantville and pay these taxes? Are you not listening? Or irregardless of how we feel, or what kind of financial stress and pressure is going to put families under in this community, and how many community members you're going to lose, and how many community members are going to lose their homes under this deal? You are not paying us any attention, you're not listening to us, you don't care what we think, or how we feel, or how we make it, or how we pay it. You don't care? That's the question.
We obviously care.
You don't obviously care.
That's we do, that's we do, that's we do, two, two and a half.
Can you speak up or can't you?
We work the two and a half years of negotiations.
Right, during COVID, but nobody could come out and come to these meetings. I've heard this over and over. I, I, that's not, and, and every time you weren't, you weren't having notified, weren't, didn't notify anybody. I didn't get any mail telling me that this deal was safe and place. I didn't get any phone calls, like I normally do, they come on out to this meeting because it's important. I didn't get any of that. And fifty percent, is it, of the community's Latino, you didn't even put anything out in this package so that they would know what's going on. So, no, it's not obvious. So, my question to you is, does it matter to you what we think, the people who are going to be paying this money? And be stuck in this contract for thirty-nine years? I read that, um, the city of Bayonne did this with them, and now they're paying over three hundred and forty-something dollars a quarter for their sewage. I got one taller, ain't no way in the world, of course, that is the fluctuation. And they want to get out of the contract, but they gotta pay three hundred million to get out of the contract. Is that where we going to end up?
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. I'm Patricia King, a little west of the Admiral Pleasantville. I got a copy of the concession, um, contract, law agreement, and we've, and taken a very persuasive view of it. Some of the language in there is unsettling to me. Uh, number one, when we think about the fact that if the, uh, Bernhard Capital does not meet its revenue stream, it will charge the city for any, for any, for any of its short, uh, say revenue, uh, strength. So, that's a burden for me as a homeowner, um, and also as a taxpayer. And what I don't understand is this, at the last meeting, there were three no confirmed votes on this council. Uh, few, some of the council people did not respond as to their position, as whether they for this disagreement or not. So, this evening, I'd like to know, from those council persons who did not speak at the last meeting, what are their, what are their firm, uh, say positions, and the reason why they're standing on those, uh, say positions? Uh, councilwoman, uh, Thomas, you didn't say, all you said that you were not for, that you were for this.
I am.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to know, what is there so much about this agreement that you are, uh, that you're for, that you're going to affirm to for?
Well, I'm for it because I've said in negotiations, I help, um, make some decisions. Um, FYI, I'm a homeowner as well, and, um, I've been living here since maybe for over thirty years. The streets are terrible. Um, and we need, we need our streets done. At that time when we were sitting down negotiating everything, um, my colleagues, all of us agreed, all seven of us agreed, um, and that's why when we took our vote, I voted yes for this.
Uh, council, councilman Swan, you weren't at the last meeting.
I'm totally against it. The, uh, I mean, we could do, first thing, what we originally agreed on was a lot different than what it, how it reads today, so. So, it doesn't look as appetizing as it did a couple months ago. So, uh, I, I think we could do it better on our own, and, uh, we don't have to be, I, I hate to have that, that, uh, thing hanging over us for thirty-nine years. I don't think I could, I can't have that.
I concur with that. And also, thinking about thirty-nine years, most mortgages, the average, the average conventional mortgage is on the third. And at the end of that thirty years, I own that piece of property, I'm, and I don't have to worry about my, uh, I say mortgage rate going up, my, my interest rate doesn't go up, I, I pay the same for, 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 like, thirty years. This I do not agree with. And the fact that the city, um, we, uh, someone placed an article in the paper, I think it was last group or so, in which she said that the city is looking for a short-term gain in getting this cash upfront. But in the end, the long-term, uh, see effects of us having, having, uh, under our, over our heads, something that my, my granddaughter, she'll be her subject to. I'm totally against that. Uh, councilman, uh, um, Korea, you didn't, uh, respond.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the councilman's response.
Well, I, I did respond, I did respond that night, and I, and I said that I have my reservation, and I said that I'm gonna express my concern to council, council president, and the committee, which I have. I don't like the language as well. I don't believe that what we voted for is exactly what we're getting now. But all that, we're, we're in the predicament now, but we have to solve the problem without any repercussion to our city as well. So, there's a lot to take into consideration before we just say, no, I'm not for it, yes, I'm for it, so I'm support. I'm asking you, what, what, what I think we should do is to bring it back to the committee that originally negotiated this. I wasn't here when it was being negotiated. It should be brought back to that committee, and that committee got to take actions based in the concern of our community, concern that I have expressed myself, work together with the legal department, and see exactly where we at, and bring it back to council. That's where I think it should happen, because we keep spinning wheel about this, but first, I'm concerned, appreciate it, and I listen to it all the time, and I express it to my colleagues, so everybody knows where I'm at, noting to all these questions are answered. Know all this into, all this moving parts of the contracts I settled, we don't have an actual deal. That's what I believe, where we at right now. So, I already expressed my recommendation, bring it back to council, to the committee, the sewer committee that originally, uh, started to, uh, the negotiation, work together with our legal department, and give us a definite answer. Bring it back to council. That's where I believe, what I truly believe it should happen.
Well, my, well, my response to that is this, you're bringing, we're not spinning the wheels here in the public.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm, 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 by no means, I'm.
I know what you're saying, but you're still straddling the fence, and I, and I think it's time to get off.
Right, thank you, Mr.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Olivia Caldwell, one thousand Church Street, Pleasantville, Jersey, and I, like the other two, are here about the sewer matter. Uh, it sounds like initially you thought the deal was one thing, now it looks like other things have come up, and if this, in fact, is this much of an issue, and we have the public that is really very upset about this, we need to, of course, have legal take a look at it.
Yes.
Because nobody is happy. The language in that contract is very problematic, and you're going to have more and more people come up. This is not a good deal for the city, uh, within double A C P. I'm the president locally, I've already spoken to state conference with regard to this. And there are other ways of going about trying to get our streets fixed and our sewers fixed. And we need to pursue what those other ways are. And if it's a bond issue, or whatever else it is, grant writing, whatever, we need to be doing that, because to have homeowners, some of us who have had a home for a long period of time, they may not be in a position to pay a fee that is doubled going down the road. So, I kindly ask council to reconsider. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Uh, Christian Miranda Rodriguez, four one one four Vendra Valley City. So, I, I definitely just saw that microaggression you did towards councilman Korea. Um, council president, I know you're upset that there are people speaking against this, and the council members now are speaking against this. It just seems like now we have sufficient support to bring this all the way back, and so I wanted to see if either councilwoman, um, or councilman Swan, or any of the other councilmen against this, um, I think councilman Carbona, not to put words in your mouth, but last time you were against this as well. I wanted to see if any one of you would propose, if you can't do it tonight, next meeting, a resolution or ordinance to take this all back. And so, it just seems like we have the votes to start this process, and I want to see if you guys had the courage to do it tonight.
Anyone else from the public?
Debbie Carrington, one oh two East Adams Avenue. I concur with, um, Ms. Thomas, that our roads do need to be fixed. The infrastructure needs to be repaired. I believe, um, I need more money, right, to take care of the things that I need to take care of.
Yes.
Around my home personally, whatever, but I'm not going to go around a bank to get those funds. And I don't agree with this deal. Last week, I heard through the grapevine that the deal is already done. That's what I'm hearing. So, at this time, I would like to know, I would like to see the fifteen million dollar check, or whatever it is, to confirm, right, that this deal is done. Do we have that? So, in other words, it's not done, and we were lied to. This is not going to benefit Pleasantville. It's going to be a hardship on Pleasantville. Um, for many years, and I, and I keep hearing the, the, um, the waterfront, the waterfront, the waterfront. The waterfront was never designed or made for us, as black people. It never was. All right, so later with that, that's not even an issue. What is the issue, right, is, um, the city, the residents are, are going to be affected by this deal. Nothing about this deal makes any sense at all, absolutely none. And I don't, I'm not convinced that you guys have convinced us, right, that this deal is the best deal. So, um, there are other ways, there are other avenues.
Yes.
And all it takes is a little work. If this is the end-all, be-all, I'm, I'm telling myself too, but Sisdrum, if this is the end-all, be-all, right, I would suggest that you go back to work. You go back to work and find another avenue to get this done. What's the situation with the transfer station? We haven't forgotten about that.
That hasn't come before us, because I believe they have not approached the planning board with any other designs or any expectations of a vote that would make it come before council to us, so that's kind of on hold.
Okay. All right, I, um, my request is that, um, this board will reconsider this bad deal. Uh, you know what, I'm sorry, both of them, both of them, both of them, not to ask both of them. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
We have a council. My name is Reverend James Barclay. I live on two twelve Shaferon Avenue. Uh, I've been in this country for twenty-one years. I lived in Pleasantville for twelve years. Uh, you hear me speak rarely, because I have to do a lot of research before I speak on issues. Since the deliberation on this issue, I've been talking to residents who should have been benefiting from it, and what I've heard repeatedly is that they tend to reject the deal. Well, I stay here tonight to give you an example of my experience with deals like this. In nineteen twenty-six, Firestone signed a contract with my country, one hundred, one million acres, for six cents an acre, for ninety-nine years. We got stuck with that contract. And they use people like slaves because we could not get out of the contract. What I'm trying to say is thirty-nine years is too much for any contract. If you can take it back and redesign, I agree, we need to build our streets. I agree, I'm concerned when I travel through other cities, I see the streets are built, I'm concerned. But I prefer you increasing something on me temporarily, at least for five years, that can build my streets, that you have control over. But if you sign this contract, you are relinquishing.
Yeah.
You're right, so you're, of your city, so we call them vulture company. They just come and eat and tear you up. and eat and tear you up. And what they do is they have strategy. When they sign the contract with you, after the first 10 years, they sell it to another guy. Then he counterfeits rules. Then he sells it to another person. And you are stuck. Look, I respect all of you, you've been doing a good job, I just came to appeal to your mind, to your conscience, that don't leave this thing on your legacy. People will talk about it for years to come. So it's an appeal. I'm not here to bully you, but just to appeal to you as friends. Take this deal back, find a better solution, walk with the mayor, and bring another proposal. Thank you very much.
Good morning, ah, sorry, good evening, that boy, Sis Trump, how's everybody doing? My name is Del Archie, and I live in Pleasantville. I keep hearing streets, streets, streets. I remember a while back, you were speaking in reference to things that had to get done, in reference to this contract here, as far as we need money so we can get these things done. I'm gonna go back to 2020, and I might be wrong, considering my transfer system. So my question is, why did the city of Pleasantville abandon the June 24, 2020 amendment random prepared by Lanes M. Wetula Associates LLC funding options for sewer projects? Question. Finding such as FEMA, EDA, NJIB, and New Jersey DOT in the form of grants and/or low interest loans. One, 75% grant through FEMA for Cedar Crest and Dally Pumping Station. 300 total project costs. This is the grant, this was back in 2020, with the city of Pleasantville, because you were speaking about certain streets that had to get done, and we need the money to get it done. So we figured that we can take this $15 million deal to get us out of debt, and the contract can do the work and sell it out. Number two, 80 to 100% grant, grant funding through EDA CARES Act for Ansley Boulevard Sewer Lines. 450,000 total project cost. It's been spelled out already, going back to 2020. Number three, 50 to 75% interest-free finance through NJIB for various projects totaling approximately 3.7 million. Five. Now let me back up four. 100% grant funding, because we're talking grants here right now. 100% grant funding through New Jersey DOT for, take it out, my sister, row work, $500,000 annually. Further, the NJIB has at times offered principal forgiveness on outstanding loans, which ultimately equates to a grant. Number five, additionally, due to the impact of COVID-19, there may be additional funding options available at the federal level. So what we wanted to do was for the city of Pleasantville, get out of this jam, because these streets is messed up, need to be done. If a grant was already done through the aspects of having lawyers come in, working with the city, to see how we can get these things done. And if it's spelled out in black and white, and it was grants that's available, and if we went for the grants or didn't go for the grants, I don't wanna say why didn't we, and as it was mentioned here, streets need to get done, so how are we gonna fix this if we say no to the project? Well, this right here, these grants from the city done a study in already, in 2020, your answer's in black and white. Two minutes out, all ready?
Three.
What's three? Cause somebody give me their time. So look, 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 I owe me no disrespect, rest, I mean no disrespect. Working with you, not against you, none of you. If you guys did the study, and had professionals coming in, you don't pay them money to do it. How could you not take the advice and benefit from the grants the government's giving you? You don't have to go no deal with nobody, baby. Not at all. So I would just say, backing up, pump the brakes. Pump the brakes.
Anyone else from the public?
Pump the brakes, you got your answer in black and white. It's here. Can I take our time?
Yeah, you can take my time.
Is that all right?
Come up there and say, I'll give you a show.
I gotta check that sound, sound, I think you might have settled some toes there. I gotta check that out. I'll be back, I'll be soon, say for now.
Good evening, everyone. Jav Johnson, Jav Johnson, 11 West Pleasant Avenue, Pleasantville. I'm here on a different matter, but ones that's very important to me, and probably other residents in the city. For a number of weeks, the group of young men, anywhere between 19 and 24, have been hanging around, they used to hang around Kings, they hang around the market on Main Street, then they moved to the barber shop, now they park themselves next to me. They trip all over the lawn, disrespect, disregard, trashing everything, cussing, smoking, and probably doing business that they shouldn't be doing. Excuse, I'm sorry, what's your address again? 11 West Pleasant. Uh, West Pleasant. You'll see the cowboy side. So I wanna, I wanna give, I wanna thank the police. I spoke with the sergeant today to see what the best avenue was to deal with it, because I dealt with it a couple of years ago, I just wanna make sure.
Thank the chief, he's great.
Thank you, chief. So he said, call next time you see them gatherers. I went right around there from, I'm on my lunch break, and they gatherers, I always talk to them, because I know most of them from the school district. Move along, don't come back and haunt the police, or they wanna tell me what they, that their legal mind ain't over law. So while they're talking, I called the police, police told them, gotta go. Went back to work, come back this evening. Three more gathered, told them the same thing, they wanna go back and forth, threatened, Mr. Johnson at the blue house, what if I harass you back? I just wanna, I wanna not only thank the police, but ask you guys to continue to support the police and other residents and myself, because I'm gonna continue calling, lean on you. They're out there doing a business, I know I'm interrupting whatever they're doing, but they're trashing the area, they're disregarding, disrespecting the whole block, I've talked to other residents, they just move along, right now, they, I hope they've dispersed for good, but I just wanna make you aware, there's a big problem, and I would appreciate your support and your help. 11 West Pleasant. I guess also asking, does the police monitor and go through there? Please make sure to ask. Now, I know, I'm talking to you guys, I'm talking to the police, I wanna make sure you guys are aware of what's going on. I wanna move them along, because then, you know, they begin damaging property, they don't care, and they don't own, you just hanging out, and everybody's family, that's my family, try to do a little homework, that's not their family, just wanna hang there. So I'm asking, thank the police, but asking you for your support, and helping to move this problem out. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Hello. Tim Jones, Pleasantville. I'd like to thank the council members that have given consideration to this matter and have reversed course on this concession deal, because there are a lot of details that are very, not just questioned, but problematic. I mean, Ms. Faramalala, one point up at the last meeting, it was very important, considering of the sewer revenue, because the sewer presently brings $2 million a month, a year to Pleasantville. $2 million revenue comes from sewer bill to Pleasantville. Of that, 1.2 million dollars thereabout goes to pay the salaries in this town. If we do this concession deal, that money disappears. $100,000 doesn't even fund support to employees.
Thank you.
So that's something that is a major factor that I think has not been considered in this picture. Another thing is a factor, and I would like to ask any council member to answer this question. I listened, I watched, I read the transcript from the December meeting. Oh, and I thank you, Tony, for calling me this morning, I ended up in the hospital. I read the transcript from the December meeting and September meeting, well, September meeting. And I saw in there where he said that you will get a minimum of 1.4 million dollars a year for 33 years for maintenance on the sewer system, and 10.9 million dollars in the first five years. So that's a total of approximately 57 million dollars. My question to you is, how can you match that minimum 57 million dollars with what the contract says, which is no more than 57 million dollars? I can say to anyone in this room, I will give you no more than a million dollars. And I can be honest and fulfill an obligation, because any amount serves that purpose. And I'm asking you, how can you agree to a contract that has such a big problem in it? A minimum, and that's what they told you. They sold you on a minimum amounts of money that they were investing to the system. It's just plenty of many issues with the contract. Please explain to me how you can be rationalized, a minimum of 1.4 million dollars, and what the contract says is which is no more than 1.4 million dollars. Can anyone answer that question, especially those that still support the deal? Carla, could you answer that question, since you were in on negotiations?
I'm sorry?
Can you rationalize being told that they will give you a minimum of 1.4 million dollars a year, when the contract says no more than 1.4 million dollars a year? Which anyone can see is different, is black and white. How can you accept those terms?
Well, I have been, I have been listening to the transcript from September.
But you were there, but you were there in the meeting, because you were mentioned in the transcript, you didn't say much. In fact, no one said much. They asked questions, they asked about Bayonne. Does anyone have any questions about Bayonne? It was silence. None of you asked a single question about Bayonne. But Bayonne has been occurring in 2012, 10 years, 10 years prior to you dealing with this deal, basically. And yet you had no questions about that issue. They said Bayonne was wonderful. Do you have any questions about it? People say it's a disaster, I think questions should be asked about that.
Well, in committee, we did discuss Bayonne.
And what conclusions did you come to about it?
About Bayonne?
Yes.
That their deal is their deal.
But also, Mr. Rowey, R-O-W-E-Y, in that September meeting, also said that the conditions that you're being offered are the same as Bayonne's. He says that in that meeting, they have the same terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Jones, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Anyone else from the public?
Now, you know I'm not gonna come all the way here. Linda Carrington, I live with Dave. There's two things that I recognize in this building tonight, it must be several. But the first thing I recognized, Mr. Sis Trump, was that you said there were seven solid firms.
That's what you said.
That's what you said. I heard you sitting right there. I got up close so I can see you saying, seven firms.
Want to be voted as through here, seven firm, solid folks.
Okay, is that, is that your answer now? Okay, well, one thing I know, one thing that I know, please don't take up my time, because you'll be hitting your gap one minute. One thing I know is that pride goes before fall. And I'm telling you right now, we're falling. We're pretty much on fire. I understand the magnitude of your jobs. I understand that, I get it. I get it that you worked two and a half years, and now people are talking about the deal that you made, because you worked so hard at it for two and a half years, I get it. But can you get it that you, you have to hear the voice of the people? Can you hear this? Can you hear me now? This is egregious. I see at least two people who are against this deal now. If at that time they voted yes, now they're saying no. I see one person that's a half a vote. It's ambiguous for him. Last council meeting, I asked the question, how many people on the council own houses in Pleasantville? Why? Why did I ask that question? Because it's easier to make a deal when you don't have any investment in the city. And if you don't have a property here, you either don't care about the magnitude of the brevity that weighs on the people, or you get paid. I know, I heard you, I heard you, I, no, don't take up my time.
I've had my heart and soul as a donor, as a public servant, whole in turn.
Wah wah wah. Wah wah wah, please, okay, I will, I will. I heard you talking to my husband last week, not last council meeting, I heard you. You said that the deal was already done. How can the deal be done, and the voice of the people is still speaking? You are disrespectful president.
Yes, he is.
And all I wanna know from you is how much are you willing to sell us out for?
I never sold you out.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did, Sis Trump.
I never would.
Yeah, you did.
I never would. We had an original deal set on this table, set on this table for $10 million that would have foreclosed this city. $10 million, it was such an egregious, thank you, this, 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 this deal was $10 million, and it was sent to BPU, what happened, Tom, with that, Mr. Councilman Davenport?
Say it again?
What happened? $2 million, $2 million, $200 million in the deal? It was, it would have been a $12 million.
But what happened? You asked what happened, I'm trying to hear the what happened.
It would have been a $12 million sale of the system. Lose your state aid, lose federal aid, lose state grant, lose federal grant.
All of that loss you're talking about can't be greater than the loss that we're gonna face.
This deal was, this, this, this deal was 15 times better than that deal.
Now, did you read the contract? What did you read? Maybe we should, as a city, sit down and go by page by page and line by line, and maybe you can help us understand why you made this deal. Maybe we ought to do that, because I can understand with comprehension, I can read with comprehension, and what I read, Councilman Sis Trump, does not make any sense to me.
Thank you for the conversation.
Anyone else from the public?
That's who y'all voted for.
Good evening, my name is Anna, from 1503 Monarch Place, Pleasantville. I just wanna ask the question, we get this $2 million every year, we find out 1.5 is for salaries and stuff, what happens to the rest of the money? So all these years, we've been getting this money, and no one thought about doing any kind of repairs, maybe little minor repairs to the sewer system. No one thought about that, you just took the rest of the money and did whatever you thought was important, and no one thought that the sewer line was getting important. If you never did any work on it, you know it was eventually deteriorating year by year by year, but no one did anything. You didn't say anything about it, you just took the money and did something else, did something else with it, instead of working on the sewer. Now you come up with this project, and now you're gonna put the burden on us for 39 years, but you never took any of the money that you got to work on the sewer. So what makes you think that that money that you got, that you're thinking about getting, is that you're gonna actually do the work on the sewer and on the streets? Because if you put all your money in one thing, and you're paying everything off of that, how do you, how do you separate that? You can't. I've been doing accounting for 40 years, you can't. You gotta keep money in a separate account. So if that sewer account, you should have been doing work on our sewer account. You should have been working on our streets, on the sewer line back then. It makes no sense. Pardon me?
Did you have a question? You had a question at the beginning?
Yes.
What's happened to that money?
Yes.
The money has gone into reducing the tax rate, what is for your problem?
Reducing the tax rate? Our taxes been going up, I don't know where you're talking about. I don't want the tax rate. Am I just walking to a clown? Our taxes have been going up, wait, 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 give me two seconds. Wait, someone's out.
Every year.
Every year, go south.
Without a doubt.
Okay. Every year.
And most of our.
And give me two seconds.
Most of our budget is because of labor, police, fire, all the employees, that's most of our budget.
How many employees do we have in the city of Pleasantville? I'd like to know that.
About 190.
And we get, our salaries are 1.1?
Their total salaries?
No, I'm talking about the money, for 100 some people, you're paying 1.7.
The million dollars, 1.2 million dollars we get is spread out throughout the town, for utility bills, for building maintenance, for repairs.
So repairs and maintenance, and that would be the sewer.
Repairs of the trucks.
That would be the sewer.
Something completely different.
But you're using the sewer money to do buildings and trucks and whatever, you're not using the building, that sewer money. You're not using the building, that sewer money for the sewer. You're using it for everything else. So how are you helping us? I'm just asking the question.
There's, there's a debate here.
He's answering my question, I don't have to know.
Okay.
But can we just, can we just clarify something and, and if you can, and I know you're trying, you all are trying to get questions answered tonight, but I take issue when we're directing the questions to employees, as an employee. The responsibility and ownership is up here. And so, I got it.
Okay, Mr. Sis Trump, that's the one who directed it.
And that's why I'm trying to redirect it to him. It's not on you. I'm, I'm trying to refocus back to where it should be, just so that we
It was the one who directed me there, okay.
I know that.
I was talking to the crowd.
And I asked him to redirect it and when he did not, I jumped in. So two things that I just want to say that would hopefully be helpful. There is a separate account for the sewer. For, it's not gonna be a satisfactory answer, but it's the answer. Right, so there is a separate account for the sewer. And historically, throughout the years, we are taking on, um, issues that have been going on forever with, the city has been practicing using the sewer revenue to offset the taxes, which the word, the, the word reduce was used and that's not what we've been able to do. What we've been trying to do was, uh, alleviate some of the pressure where the property taxes go off the chart. And that's what we're doing with the sewer money. Not the best practice, as you may know as an accountant, but that's what the city has been doing.
You know, I understand that and I think the people
So I just wanted to explain it.
The people of Pleasantville would have taken a little bit increase, okay, in their taxes if we'd have known that we needed something done in the sewer.
Right.
So you, I mean, if this is brought up and the people out here know, okay, we need to raise the taxes because the extra money we're getting from the sewer, we need to work on the sewer. That's all I'm saying.
I, I understand that, but I just wanted to explain what was going on so that you would have an understanding of what the city has been doing. Not that it's the best practice, not that it's right or wrong, but it is the explanation and it, it is a separate account. Uh, there's, under the, uh, state budget statutes, we can't make sewer money with your, uh, your, your regular operating money. So there is a separate account, but the city hasn't been in a position where we could utilize that access that comes in to, to, uh, repair the roads. And that's what we should be doing with the money.
Right.
Right, that's what should be happening. And for years, we've been trying to come up with a plan where we wean ourselves off of that practice so that we can, uh, address the roads. Now, back to you saying that the roads are deteriorating and we haven't been doing anything. We have, but we've been piecemealing it, putting a Band-Aid on it for years. So this council decided, hey, we gotta take a different look at this and try something else. Whether that's good or not good in your eyes, I'm just explaining as to how we got where we are.
But you're not gonna be able to do all this yet, right? Yeah, okay. Someone else take over.
Good evening, can you hear me? Um, my name is Kathleen Spayton, I live in Linwood. Um, I'm curious, I'm sorry, I was at a Linwood planning meeting, so unfortunately I missed some of this meeting here tonight. But I'm curious as to the status of this, um, MOU and in particular, the local finance board. I know the local finance board met and unfortunately, uh, this was not in front of them. So does this board have any status update as far as the MOU in front of the local finance board? And when, what meeting do you think it will go in front of them?
You're right, did not make it onto their May agenda.
Could you speak into the microphone so that we can hear you? Thank you, sir.
You're right, did not make it onto the local finance board's May agenda. We're told that they are targeting their June agenda. It's not the, our best timetable for them to respond. They review it at whatever it needs to be in the appropriate schedule. And part of their review process, as you probably know, is a third party review, which only starts in the receipt payment for the third party review. The payment was recently submitted, uh, so I don't know what that means in terms of how much time the third party review is gonna need. And then how quickly the LFP can act on whatever it takes. So best case right now is June.
So, just to clarify, um, third party review is paid by the city of Pleasantville? Am I correct on that? And then that third party review has to be paid. And then the local finance board looks at that third party review and holds a public hearing? I'm just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, the, the third party review is part of the LFP process. The LFP has enough people who look at it as well. Okay, he has to get another set of eyes, to check the bias from the third party. And then the LFP will take into consideration whatever they determine through both internal reviews and the third party review.
Um, just an announcement for the public, um, this, um, sewer concessionary agreement, the MOU, will go in front of the local finance board. The public has a right to attend that meeting. Um, they have a website. Uh, you can go online and you can register to attend, it's being held via Zoom. Um, there is a public comment session. Um, they also will take written, uh, letters, uh, in response to this, the, um, MOU that will go in front of them. Um, it's, uh, conducted professionally, it's transcribed. Um, and I appreciate the city putting that package together. I know it was extensive, it's over 600 plus pages. And I'm going to be most interested to see what the local finance board, uh, thinks about this MOU. And, uh, I, I know they're advisory, but I'm hoping that the city will take all of that review and also the third party review into consideration. Um, the other concern I, I'm having and I can hear it with my friends and neighbors in Pleasantville, um, what's going to be done to make sure that, um, that money that is in excess goes into a fund so that the sewer improvements can be done instead of offsetting the budget? I, I realize it's not easy to do that, a lot of citizens and towns do that. Um, and, uh, my biggest concern is that any money that's in excess needs to go into a sewer fund enterprise account. Um, and you need to use that money, whether it's with the MOU or if the MOU doesn't get approved or whatever the status is as far as the local finance board. Please, city of Pleasantville, take that money and set it aside. And I think that's what some of the residents are concerned about. I know personally myself, I am rather concerned about that. I, I realize you're using it as a way, um, and as a matter of fact, at the last council meeting, there was a lot of question brought to the administrator about exactly how that money is being spent. And it was mentioned of offsetting other budgets. And that's not what that money's supposed to be spent on. It's supposed to be spent on approving the sewer and also the roads. And I thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the public?
David Coward, for three times tonight, you're in the public. I wouldn't even know where to start. Ms. Peyton, Peyton, um, how long has it been that the city has known that our sewer construction needs to get done?
How long had, have I been aware?
Twenty years, 25, 30?
I mean, as, as we just stated, to be honest, we have a very old system, it's deteriorated. So that, this has been an issue. It's not something that, you know, the city just found out about yesterday. It's has been an issue.
And, and I agree with the young lady who came up. She said that some of that money should have went to repairing.
I agree.
And we're talking 20 years. And during that time, the longest sitting councilmen were the mayor, Ricky, and Mr. Swan. So you can't blame the whole council for not doing what needed to be done with the sewer system. None of you, the three that I just named, they haven't come up with anything to put money into the sewer. Like, we could have got it done at the time and we wouldn't be where we're at now. And it wasn't done. But what I, what I also wanted to say is, Mr. Swan, I agree with you. Hundred percent, 39 years is a long time for a contract with the sewer. But I also wanted to let you know, with the transfer station, the dump that's gonna be here in Pleasantville, that's not 39 years. That's forever. And you're for that.
Did you read the press today about what's happening with, uh?
No, I don't, I don't read the press.
It's the Press and Book.
No, I don't read the press. But that, that
There's, there's a big concern coming down from Camden, like if nobody gets, if they're, uh, you know, like that falls right into play, it's gonna be we're, we're, we got a snowball effect coming at us with what it's gonna take to get rid of our trash eventually. I mean, it's coming, it's coming quick. So like Camden, they can, they're gonna make their closure be eradicated than we are, so it's just, we're gonna have to move it further. So if we can get, have any way that we can somehow eliminate even, uh, construction debris, that will save the town a ton of money from, you know, it's I'm for that. I'm for any way we can save money, so
That's not true because if, if you're taking money from the, um, ACUA.
Well, if we give the ACUA, it's also
If you take it away from ACUA, they gotta make their money up some other way. And they're gonna raise taxes and we're gonna pay more. We're gonna raise, we're gonna pay more. And with the trash situation that's out of control throughout this country, but it's not Pleasantville's responsibility to take this on.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
That's not our responsibility to do it. But you're for that.
It might never get built.
I hope not. But what, what I, I agree with most of the people who have spoken, that 39 years, it's, it's a long time. And maybe we do need to go back to the drawing room. Maybe we do need to have a town hall meeting. But we also need to have a town hall meeting about this transfer.
Exactly.
It's too bad, and I wanted to commend you guys tonight for approving the brightest side of cannabis. We had an opportunity here where we can bring millions of dollars of revenue here in Pleasantville if we utilize this cannabis thing. I mean, millions and millions of dollars. And we won't be begging people for money. This be right here. So you need guys, you need to utilize this cannabis thing and get on board and get some businesses here in Pleasantville doing this business. Because if you did your research and you look all around the country, people who have, um, got into this cannabis business have, it's booming, it's booming. So let us, um, utilize that. And when we're talking about utilizing it, I, I would hope that council would give the opportunity for local entrepreneurs to get into this business. Um, do some research and find out how this can be done to help the local people here open businesses. Because that's what it was set aside for, for people minority communities. So please, that, you got, you got an answer for money right here. Cannabis.
Anyone else from the public?
I'd like to say one thing before I leave.
Yeah, she was on the other one. She's good.
I'd like to say one thing before I leave. I don't like coming here and being condescended to and I don't think anybody else does either. It's a lot of arrogance on this council.
Yep.
A lot. And it's rude, it's unprofessional, it's ignorant. And you should not be treating people this way. Cause we, because we voted for you, you sit there. You're the president of city council of Pleasantville, not the United States of America.
Right.
And the way you treat people is the plural. And I think that you need to reflect and take a look at yourself. Cause you may not be sitting there and it's coming next vote, you know?
Anyone else from the public? entertain a motion to close the public court.
Uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to rescind ordinance number 1-2022, approving the concessionaire agreement and ask that legal counsel draft an ordinance to rescind that ordinance for the upcoming city council meeting scheduled for June 6th.
My second. Can you repeat that, what did you say?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the ordinance, ordinance number 1-2022, approving the concessionaire agreement and ask that legal counsel draft an ordinance to rescind said ordinance for the upcoming city council meeting for June 6th, 2022.
That, that, that requires, where am I? Can I speak to this? To take that and to vote with, uh, with the city and judge, we already have an agreement that we made.
It's changed.
We're only in a verbal agreement, we have a voting agreement.
That's why you haven't checked. Mr. Loody has a deposit slip for 15 million dollars in his office. We have no deal.
Okay.
And that's going to, this may have, um, guided discussion, whatever discussion's gonna follow. As I understand the motion and the second, it is requesting that there be an ordinance prepared to be introduced at the next council meeting and considered, however council would choose to consider at that time, uh, for first reading, like any other ordinance. And if it progresses through that first reading, and presumably it will be brought on for the second reading, at which point there would be standard public hearing and vote by council. Uh, and if, at that point, it went forward, that would mean the council was voting at that point to rescind. Now, I, I must caution council, uh, because as you know, we've had some discussions in closed session about the terms of the contract and whether those terms are favorable or unfavorable in the, in the view of various members of council. Those discussions, we can't talk about at this point because they were, are trying to plant frivolous discussions meant to help council, you know, formulate their own ultimate decisions on where they want to go with this agreement. So, in the course of your discussions, I think whatever they may be, uh, again, I would ask you, please be very careful not to talk about anything that was the subject of, uh, discussion or advice in a closed session about the merits of proceeding one way or another way. So the only thing I'm really directing, uh, council on at this point is procedurally. If council wants to afford on this motion, uh, which is consecutive, the motion is one that will not, if you vote it up, it doesn't change anything about the agreement. It does not rescind it, it does not approve it anymore than they already been approved. It simply means that at the next meeting, the issue of rescinding the, uh, ordinance we adopted a couple months back would be on the table for action with council at that point. If that helps.
So questions, so can another motion go on a floor?
Yes, but you need to deal with the motion that's on one way. And once that's done, there's, there's not any limit to motions that any member of council might have to seek to introduce in that passage.
All right, I just have another question. If this goes through tonight and everything happens, whatever way it happens, yes, yay or nay, what are the financial repercussions that the city's gonna suffer from going through or pulling the deal off the table after all this money has been
Anyway, still, still quiet. Uh, the short term answer, uh, councilman, is that there would not be any repercussions unless, unless and until there was final action taken. So steps will follow. If this motion passes and an ordinance comes before you, if the ordinance goes forward, ultimately, uh, you vote to rescind the agreement, there
That's what I'm asking, I'm not talking about now. What happens if it
And that part is part that we can really discuss in public now because that was, as you recall, one of the subjects we discussed in closed session. And that, you know, those discussions naturally shape, uh, the individual council members' determination of which way to go.
The motion on the table basically implies that we are gonna vote to create the ordinance to rescind it. Next council meeting is when the vote to rescind it will go. Am I correct?
Uh, almost. The, what would happen if this goes forward and the ordinance is prepared to rescind it, that ordinance comes before you, June 6th meeting.
All she's, I'm sorry to interrupt you, all she's, uh, just plates on the table was that the ordinance should be prepared, that the ordinance should be looked at.
No.
Well.
To rescind.
Ordinance to rescind.
Well, but let's make sure we're not talking about.
Rescind it, this, we, preparing the ordinance.
This, right, the only action that's being asked to vote on this motion, as I understand it, is for council to say either yes, prepare a form of ordinance for the next meeting, or no. If the answer is yes, to perform, to prepare a form of ordinance, that is what will come before council at the next meeting, and council will at that point begin the process that you do with any ordinance. You consider it the first, uh, reading, and you schedule it forward for a second public hearing, uh, second reading of public hearing.
If I may, please, sir. You, you took her for the second, uh, I, I just wanted. Just, okay, I have, I just wanted to add something. You, you taking the vote for them, you put the motion on the floor this afternoon to rescind.
Right.
Can you also add the transfer station?
Yeah.
It's all I'm asking. It's, 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 please, add that to all.
I was gonna ask the same. I was gonna ask the same.
No, right now.
I know, it's so complicated, and first.
You can do a vote right there.
Motion second. Any more questions?
Any more questions?
I don't have no more questions.
Do the right thing, at the right time.
Let's do both, do both.
Motion's on the floor, roll call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
No.
Fummelaram.
Yes.
Thomas.
No.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisro.
No.
That's four yeses to move it forward and three noes, this passes.
Yeah. What about the other one? You're gonna laugh, this is not a joke. It's not a joke. I've been, I've been asking council to do this, and now you wanna do this one? Do both, right now, this evening. Well, I'll make the motion to rescind the, uh, transfer station also.
Second.
Thank you.
This is already been asked.
That's the. The, uh, question I would give council at this point. And unfortunately, I didn't anticipate this one coming, so I'm not really in a position to, uh, tell you precisely what obligations council is already gonna take with respect to the transfer station. With that said, there is a general power within council to rescind any action that is taken. If, in this case, and I guarantee this will be the case, uh, council being asked or maybe asked to take a vote to prepare a form of ordinance to rescind whatever was previously passed with respect to the transfer station, you can, you can do that part without any consequence, but in the meantime, we would certainly need to look at the existing ordinance, uh, to be able to advise council before you took any action on the rescinding ordinance, what that would mean.
Well, we're doing the same thing we just did with the, um, the deal, same thing.
Basically.
That's, that's all.
Motion second. But we need to know what we're rescinding, and so if we could, and I'm just, if, if I may, I'm not really sure, I don't wanna speak over you. As, can we get that information so you can be prepared to do it at the next meeting, so you know what you're rescinding? Cause I don't know, I tried to look it up to see what ordinance that is, but just be prepared, because right now you don't know what you're rescinding. You can't just say I'm rescinding a transfer station. So we can get the documents, get it to council, and then you do that if you desire to do it at the next meeting. Is that?
Is that necessary?
Yeah, why, I'm, what, cause what are you rescinding?
Yes, to that point.
Yeah.
We, and I personally can't tell you what it is that was done before, what ordinance it is, but if you're going to entertain a motion at this point to authorize the preparation of an ordinance to rescind another ordinance, we kinda need to know what the base ordinance says.
Was that your December two thousand and twenty one meeting at that house?
Okay, pull it up. Over that. Yeah, yeah. Let's get that information some more. Hold it up.
We taking a vote, what's going on?
So, motion in the second, go to the floor.
Yeah, and, and council, that's how. I know what it is. Discussion we just had here, uh, prefer to take the course back to our kind of administrator, which is, let's familiarize ourselves with exactly what it is that has been previously adopted so that before you go forward, we potentially rescind anything, you know, that is fully understood, or that will mean any of the opportunity to discuss with your professionals, including legal, what the ramifications of that is. So if, if that's the direction you want to go, and what you need to have, it would be a withdrawal of the motion.
All right, so what I'm gonna ask you is this, I just wanted to be clear and make sure that you did your homework. Have you discussed the ramifications, like I asked you before, on rescinding this deal with the, um, sewer situation? Have you discussed those with, yeah, I know you haven't discussed it with me, so I guess you might have discussed it with a couple other people, I'm, I'm not sure.
Now, it wasn't discussed yet, councilman, there was a memorandum prepared. Now, it wasn't intended to be apprehensive, because it was in response to, um, I think, two or three specific questions that came from the council member a little while in, uh, last Monday's meeting. And that was, I don't know if it was distributed yet, but it was sent out from my office, I think, on Friday, so it will find its way to council members, and that will give you our answers or our analysis of at least those specific questions that have been put. And more.
That document is distributed.
Yes.
Any further questions, obviously, we want council members to send to us through the online stream.
I'll take that, my second. We withdraw the first and second.
Council, council at this time.
Let's give me about that. One more time. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, is, oh, if it was a resolution that was done and passed, does the public have a right now to speak on that resolution that was just passed? We had, we never had a chance to speak on this, it's new business. Am I correct? Counsel?
About the resolution, I'm not correct.
No, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the sewer deal too. Like, they took a vote.
Yeah.
Does the, does the public have a right to ask questions now that this resolution was passed?
Well, just so it's clear, maybe it wasn't. The resolution asked was only a resolution authorizing my office, in conjunction with the city's other officials, to prepare a form of ordinance which would rescind the sewer. That's, that actual ordinance, obviously, doesn't exist yet, so there's nothing being voted on in that regard. The target, as I assume, is to get it on for the next council.
Okay, I got you. I just wanted to know, cause I wanted to, if possible, if the city could get a date to have a town hall meeting for both Friday. So they can hear from the public, and we can go line by line on each one, from sewer deal to the transfer.
Yep.
So let the public know exactly what's going on, cause we never had a public hearing on either. Can the city council, please, have a town hall meeting so we can discuss these serious issues?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out, and, uh, we're, we're in your court, and we were, I, you know, we're all doing as much as we can to make things right. I, you know, we're all residents. I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven, and, and kind of this whole mess has been heard, and this goes back way, way back, even before Mayor Peterson was here.
He was here.
And this is, you know, I've been here a long time, and this has been one of those things where every year you're trying to wean away from this darn sewer thing, it was caused way, way long time ago, and every person that's been in this seat, all, it's like the dirty little secret of Pleasantville, and we've all been trying to get rid of it, but it's like, oh, well, we wanna raise twenty-five cents in taxes, and then we always go, ah, no, okay, well, we'll stick to what we're doing. And that's kinda what's been going on, and, and I think ultimately, you just look at the numbers. Just say, if we make five million dollars a year with this, with this, uh, sewer, at current prices, ten years, that's fifty million bucks. What are you doing forty years? What is that? That's two hundred million without even doing a, any, any raises in your, so I just can't see how the numbers work. I just say, stay what we're doing, and we, we work it out as a city, and we improve our streets, improve our sewer, and everybody we have.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out, and very concerned about your concerns, and, uh.
Hey, council, we still have a hard time hearing y'all. There's a, there's one mic's not working, I need to turn the volume up some. Will it spend, you deal with P A, turn it up.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanna say thank you for coming out, uh, I'm very interested in your concerns. I will try to do my best, uh, to do the right thing here in Pleasantville. So I, you know, appreciate y'all guys coming out and letting us know your concern. I'm hearing everything, a lot of times you won't hear me talk, but I'm paying attention to what y'all saying. Thank you, and have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Councilman, five other.
We approved the budget tonight, thirty-two million dollars. About twenty-seven million goes to pay salaries, pensions, and, uh, insurance, I believe, out of that money. That leaves us five million dollars to operate this city on, to pay electric, to pay. These guys have a, a wand, a magic wand somewhere to get this stuff, because no people in their right mind could do it these two, Ms. Payton and Mr. Loody does. We have to be very mindful of the fact that we only operate this city with five million dollars. And, you know, that's why we can't have the sewer stone. That's why anything that we got, it's like being a homeowner. You, you know, you got, you know, uh, COVID money, you got, and it was like, oh, you're gonna go out and buy? No, you didn't. You went out and you, like, paid your groceries, you paid your taxes, there was nothing left over at the end of that time. It's just like us, we have nothing left over. Unfortunately, the sewer department took a hit. Now we gotta figure out a way to do something. And the way, the best way, to me, it seems like, is to put it out there, prove it, to bond it. And so we, thirty-nine years is not a lease. That's somebody owning it for thirty-nine years. And if those pipes are only good for fifty, what happens eleven years later, when those pipes go? Do we stay in that contract for another thirty-nine years, or do we take over broken infrastructure and call this crazy all over again? So I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and expressing.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you all for coming, like I said, with all the spirit and concerns, and, uh, thank you for giving, giving us your insights, and just wanna make it public, in case you guys don't see me in the next couple of weeks, I've been trying to go on vacation for the longest time, so I'll be off from the fifteenth until the first or second of, of the month. So if you can, uh, some of you that's been calling me cannot reach, reach out, I've been, I've, I've been out, all right, so, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, keep voicing your concerns, we are listening. Um, I wanna say to Dr. Lappell, I heard the prom was a great event, keep up the great work. Um, there is a career expo for, um, offshore win. Um, if anyone's looking for a job, it's for students, for anyone, um, you can get that information from me as well. And, um, have a great night, everyone.
Councilor Davenport.
Yes, first of all, I wanna thank everybody for coming out, and I just wanna say that we might not always agree on what we're doing, but understand is that we all have the best interests of the city at heart. Um, with that being said, our, our board president, uh, vice president's over there. Um, this.
Yes.
Yes, we just, um, I just had a conversation with, um, someone that was involved in, in making sure that there's no lead in our children's water in the school system. Uh, I heard that some people had heard about it, but we're getting ready to start forming a little, uh, project to make sure that all the schools are set up right, so that the water fountains and everything's there, so that there's no lead in it. And also, we wanna try to bring the city in on that project also. Um, also, we had another meeting, what about a month ago? With a young lady from the Chamber of Commerce African American Division, and they're trying to come down here and invest in the city to try to move things forward, to try to bring in some rateables, things of that nature, that's gonna help lower the taxes, stabilize things that are going on here in the city. So with that being said, um, I'll thank you guys for coming out, and I'll see you next time.
Mr. Chair, can I add something? I'm sorry, and I wanna say congratulations, and I wish you the best of luck to Brighter Side. Um. But anyway, good luck. Good luck.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out. As you can see, council has heard your concerns, and, uh, you just have to come out and voice your opinion. I think that we just have to go and look for another solution, you know, because, um, as, as I said, when we first started, there's a few of us up there that worked for it, when they said that it was almost unanimous. But now that we know different, they can act differently. So thank you for coming out and voicing your concerns, and, um, as far as the transfer station, just do what you have to do, you're, you know, just do what you have to do as far as the transfer station sewer and everything. And, um, about the five million, I mean, the, uh, money for the sewer. Since I've been on council, yes, it has been some time that I've been on council, and we've been dealing with this demon, as Councilman Swan said, all along. We were trying to keep, trying to stabilize the taxes, so we didn't wanna, you know, we dipped into the money, and there were street repairs that had, I mean, there was, um, sewer repairs that we have done with the sewer money, but it's just that we haven't done it in bulk, you know, we've never had enough to just really get busy and do what we hoped we could do. And that's when we started looking at other avenues, such as when they were looking at the water company, and then with the concessionaire. So, you know, again, thank you for coming out, and your voice, your concerns are being heard. And also, uh, we're having our, um, Memorial Day service, uh, at Greenwood Cemetery, Monday, May thirtieth, at eleven A M. So please come out and honor the veterans and the service people. Thank you, good night.
Ms. Payton?
No additional comments.
Good evening, thanks for coming out, thank you for, for your concerns, whether I agree with you or not. Thank you for coming out, thank you for listening, and I'm always gonna do, I've been listening to you the whole time. I've been a public servant my whole life. I went to military as an eighteen-year-old. When I got out of the military, I went to union. I went to union, I worked in the, worked for the union two, and four. I worked for the union in four capacities, four capacities, twice as shop steward, twice as, as a union rep, to fight for contracts, to fight, to, to fight for the people, to, to fight, to, to fight. Thank you, council. Um, uh, to fight for the people, I've been fighting for the people my whole entire, my, my, my public servant my whole entire life. Here with this city as well. Twenty years with this city as well. I've heard your concerns, and I've always tried to do the very best to be as good. I was proud of you, and I still am. I'm proud of you because I didn't wanna roll in and end up A C P into, into, um, the national convention, into our area, and be giving our city away. A ten million dollar sale, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. A ten million dollar sale, a ten million dollar sale would have foreclosed our city. And it was so bad that once it was sent, you added two, you added two to it. Board of Public Utilities said, no, put two more million dollars into that. And then we stopped it, this committee. Councilman Swan, put us up, and Councilman Davenport, so. We stopped that, we stopped that sale, and then we went, we went to work. We went to work for two and a half years to bring up a, a, a much better deal. That deal that we had before, we were all state aid, federal aid, state grant, federal grant. What happened, what happened prior to that, what we were doing, what we were doing prior to that? to that, we were sending those grants back. We couldn't get the streets done. Came in, initially when I came in, we had an active program, program for about seven years and streets were getting done. And then the money from the state dried up. And then when the money just from the state got released again, we couldn't get them, we couldn't get the street done because we couldn't get the infrastructure. That's why we went to work and we went to work for this concessionaire agreement. That $15 million that was for the bills and the responsibility because we had this, the nine, the, the 10.9 that was going into, the 10.9 that is going to the waterfront area with the emphasis on an area that we haven't been able to go to and enjoy. I heard someone say, no, I'm not worried about that because it ain't for black folks. This is a black community. This is a black community. It's a black and brown community. And it's a, we can't get back those years. We can't get back those 27 years of not being able to go over into the waterfront, build camaraderie with one another and enjoy what other cities enjoy. I am jealous of other cities and I have a right to be.
That waterfront is not for us. It is not for us. That's your opinion.
What you, what you can do? What you can do, that's allow me to speak just like I allowed you to speak.
Oh, you didn't allow me to do that. I had a right to speak. I had a right to speak.
Oh, I gave you a right. I'm, I have my right now.
Okay, but stop using that waterfront as an excuse to be making a mistake.
Please don't interrupt me.
You're making a mistake.
I have, thank you. Thank you. It's, listen, it's, um, we did, we have been here to do the very best we possibly can. And we've been, I know it is, especially for me with this time. And, um, that, what's, what's lost in that, what's, what's lost in this, in this agreement is monies, you talked about some of the monies that, that's lost in there and you say, okay, where's this money? Where are we going to get that from? And we don't have, we don't have to take care of manpower, the bi-manpower, the supervisor, the building, the trucks, the equipment, the gas, and et cetera, and so on and so forth. That's the thought process in going into this. That was my thought process in going to, into this, that was counseling. Davenport's thought process into this. It was, it was full council. We spoke as a committee.
So... And, and you didn't want to listen and if they really had to say, you were trying to offer suggestions and...
I've always listened to everyone in this public service and I was serving the people. I have, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right.